We're going to start this meeting. This meeting is now called to order Monday, April 26, 2021. Councilmember Van Cherry, please lead us in the flag salute.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Kraus, please read the statement of public notice.
Take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA 10:4-8 and NJSA 10:4-10 as follows. The notice of the meeting was prominently posted on the bulletin board at the municipal building located at 225 Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey, on February 17, 2021. A copy of the notice was mailed to the North Jersey Herald and News and the Record on the same day. Additionally, a copy of the notice was filed in the office of the township clerk on said date. This meeting is being conducted under the circumstances surrounding the COVID-19 health situation. No public will be allowed to attend the meeting in person. A link and a telephone number to join the meeting can be accessed on the township website at www.lfnj.com. Electronic provisions have been established for the public to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Kraus. At this time, please call the roll.
Councilmember Havletts?
Present.
Councilmember Kwadi?
Present.
Councilmember Seaver?
Present.
Councilmember Van Cherry?
Present.
Council President Scobha?
Present.
At this time, we're going to ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of March 22 and April 12. May I have a motion on those two meetings for the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Kwadi, seconded by Councilmember Havletts. Are there any questions, concerns regarding the minutes of those two meetings? Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll on the minutes.
Councilmember Havletts?
Yes.
Councilmember Kwadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Van Cherry?
Yes.
Council President Scobha?
Yes. Councilmember Van Cherry, please lead us off with the council reports.
Sure. Thank you, Council President. First, I just wanted to provide an update as it relates to the Memorial Day Parade that was scheduled for May 30. After having some discussions over the weekend with the members of the American Legion, we've decided again this year, unfortunately, to postpone the parade. We are working out the details of a ceremony because we feel that it's still important, of course, to conduct that at Womorrow Road Park to honor those, the men and women that gave the ultimate sacrifice. The American Legion Post 108 is actually meeting tonight to finalize the time. It's most likely going to be at 11:00 a.m. on Saturday, May 30, at Womorrow Road Park. Once I have the details, I'm going to put out this week an email blast sort of highlighting the activities during Memorial Day weekend. In addition, the American Legion Post 108 is still going to have their Memorial Day barbecue on Saturday, May 30, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Post 108 in town. So I just wanted to let everybody know about that. We're still moving ahead with the Friday night activities. We're just working through some details with some vendors and performers, and I'm hoping to have the flyers go out this week to kind of give everybody a sense of what to expect that night. A couple of other things, thanks to Mayor Damiano, we had, the Transportation Committee had pulled together a list of streets where we're looking to add a stop sign in the near future through an ordinance. And Mayor Damiano and I worked together to pull together a letter, just letting the residents in those specific areas know what to expect. So we'll keep you posted if there's any feedback related to that letter. If all goes well, we'll look to work with you, Council President Scobha, to get that on the agenda in the near future. Couple of other things, too. I just wanted to thank some members of the township, in particular DPW Director Ron Campbell and his staff. Some residents had reached out recently for requests for trashcans near parks over by their areas. And after talking to DPW Director Campbell and his staff, they quickly, you know, addressed the situation and did what was needed to please the residents of the area. And I also wanted to thank our code enforcer, Mr. James D. Maria. There were some concerns about some of the trees over at the Water Company property along East Main Street, and he reached out to the Water Company and happy to report this afternoon, the Water Company was there assessing the situation, and they're going to be working on removing some dead trees that have been hanging for a long period of time. So, you know, just want to thank the two departments because, you know, we get requests from residents, we're always looking to see what we can do, and it's great to see that, you know, there's swift action to some of our requests that come in. That's it for me, Council President.
Thank you for your in-depth report, Councilmember Van Cherry. Councilmember Seaver?
Thank you, Council President. So we have, we are just about a month away from the start of our Little Falls Farmers Market. So again, it will start Memorial Day weekend and go through November, the beginning of November, every Sunday from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So it is being held again this year in the municipal parking lot at 225 Main Street. And then, just again, following up about Open Space Committee, we did not have our April meeting due to spring break and holiday time. So we are resuming our monthly cadence of our meetings next week and excited to report that we're actually going to be meeting in person outside so we can walk some of our beautiful green spaces and kind of finalize some of our planning in the future. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Kwadi?
Thank you, Council President. Just want to mention some events that we are working on. Councilwoman Havletts and I, we are hoping to have five movie nights this year outdoors. We're going to move them to the rec center because it makes the bathrooms available on those evenings. And if it does happen to rain, we can easily move it inside COVID precautions allowing, you know, hopefully by then, things will be a little bit different in the landscape of COVID. Also, we're planning the Green Fair. We are going to have the Green Fair. We had it two years ago. It was a big success. We didn't have it last year because of COVID. We are going to have it alongside one of the farmers markets this year. Dates are pending on all of these, subject to availability of vendors and, and people of that nature. But, but we are planning a Green Fair, we are planning movie nights, and we are planning a water event, which is tentatively scheduled for July 17. And more news to come on that, but it's just going to be a fun day down at the Sports and Recreation Complex. We're going to do something that would have never been possible when there was a grass field there, which is we're going to have a, a big water event with some slides, hopefully a dunk tank and a giant water gun fight. Just a day in July for everybody to get out and, and have some fun in a way that was never possible before. And I just want to say, I'm working with Councilwoman Havletts on all these things, and it's such a pleasure. She was our event coordinator before she was a councilwoman. She has continued to willingly participate in that role now that she's also councilwoman, and, and my appreciation goes out to her because she, she's doing so much in regards to bringing this community together and, and helping me to, to plan these events and execute them. And I just, I just really appreciate her very much. Lastly, once again, on behalf of the Domestic Violence Prevention Committee, I just want to remind everyone that if you know of anyone who may be in danger, reach out to them, let them know you're available to them, and, and make sure that they know that they're not alone. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Kwadi, you want to elaborate what a Green Fair is for those that are watching this meeting tonight and have no idea what that is?
Absolutely. So the Green Fair is an event where we pull together several vendors that can help you to reduce your carbon footprint, increase the efficiency of your home and your life. In the past, we've had solar panel providers, efficiency experts in the home. Public service has come and, and explained to people how to make your home more efficient. We had somebody who provided rain barrels. So I believe it was Schumacher Chevrolet sent a electric vehicle for people to look at, see up close if they hadn't done that in the past. So just several vendors like that, just to, to go and gather information and learn what you can do in your life to protect the environment, make your home more efficient, maybe save you a few bucks, and, and things like that. So that's why it's dubbed a Green Fair because it's environmentally friendly ways to change your life.
Thank you for that. Good explanation.
My pleasure.
Councilmember Havletts, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. So first, I'd like to thank my fellow councilman, Councilwoman Kwadi, for all of the nice compliments. It's a pleasure working with all of you and just bringing great things to this community. It's one of the things that I love to do. I'm happy to report that this beautiful spring weekend, we celebrated Earth Day with two events. One that was sponsored by our Brownies and also taken care of by Council President Scobha with the Senior Advisory Board. It was Share Seedling with the Senior. It was down at the Civic Center. Some of our seniors came down and the Brownies were giving out potted plant seedlings that they had created artwork on. It was a great way to have the youth and the seniors come together and get to meet each other. The Brownies were a great help. They sponsored it all. This was part of their Earth Day festivities. They also planted wildflowers in the planters at the Civic Center, beautifying the Civic Center just a little more. So that was great. And then we also had our first annual Spring Shred and Electronic Recycling Event. That was a great hit for the community. We went down there and it was crowded at all times. There was a lot of cars just getting rid of their documents that they wanted shredded. So thanks to GATA for coming down and doing that for us, as well as the rec center for supplying us with some volunteer, along with some Montclair State students that came down to volunteer. So thank you also to the rec center for, you know, sponsoring this and having this happen. So it was a great weekend, getting the community to do things for Earth Day, and I'm sure that will bring, bring other things in the future. Lastly, I just wanted to mention the Friends of the Library. They're having their monthly meeting tomorrow via Zoom. You can go on the library website and get the link for the Zoom meeting. The Friends of the Library is still looking for a president, a vice president, and a secretary. The positions will become available in June. So the Friends of the Library is one of the fundraising groups that helped the library to raise money, and we could really use to have some new board members, some new ideas, some new members. So if anyone is interested, please go on the library website and join the meeting tomorrow night. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Do you know about how many residents Councilmember Havletts took place in the shredding event? Because when I was in the parking lot with you, it seemed like there was quite a few residents lined up dumping.
I do not exactly know, but I do know that the shredding truck was absolutely filled to the brim, and also the recycling truck was filled, and they said it was a very successful day.
Great, great program. I just want to remind everyone, the seniors, that there'll be a afternoon concert at 2:00. John Morano, our local resident, his band will be playing at the Civic Center. That is free. It'll be outside if it rains, and if there's not too many people attending, we'll have the program inside. So that would be 2:00 on May the 26th. Mayor, the floor is yours. Mayor, if you want to talk about that 1402 ordinance under your report, the floor is open to you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Council President. So first things first, I got a couple of things that are not under the mayor's report heading on the agenda, but just that I would like to address here this evening. One of the items, and I see that our Planning Board Chairman Walter Kilpatrick is joining us this evening, a common theme that I have noticed, along with Council President Scobha in particular, when it comes to the Planning Board over the past year or a year and a half, is that almost monthly, there is an application that comes before the Planning Board where there is a variance seeking relief from something that we have in town called the Floor Area Ratio, the FAR. And the FAR, to me, is an outdated way to determine a lot coverage, especially here in Little Falls. And the reason being, and the easiest way to explain it, is if your lot is 10,000 square feet and your home is 2,000 square feet of a footprint, if that house of yours is two stories tall, the lot coverage that we kind of assess you with is actually based upon the square footage of your house, not so much the postage stamp or outline of the house that covers the lot. And what it does is it triggers a number, well, as I said, almost monthly, of variance that needs to come before the Planning Board to seek relief from the floor area ratio. And I think something that I would like to discuss, we, we had some discussions with Jeff Genota prior to his passing as our planner, and we're going to resume now with our current planner, Ryan, is eliminating the FAR and coming up with a better way to calculate this lot coverage through the municipality. What I don't like to see is people seeking relief from a planning board or being required to secretly from a planning board, which oftentimes costs them a lot of money and professionals, to have a very small or simple addition added to a home. That is almost a no-brainer, in my opinion. And the only reason they need to seek relief from the planning board is because of this outdated floor area ratio calculation that we use to calculate the lot coverage in Little Falls. So I hope that over the next couple of, you know, the next month or two, I will be able to present something to the council for consideration and elimination of the FAR, the floor area ratio. And it does a couple of things. One, it allows people to build more as of right. There's multiple benefits to that. One is it doesn't cost them extra money to have hired professionals to come before a planning board. But the benefit to the municipality is, is it doesn't discourage people from making application to our building department to seek appropriate permits, to pay those fees that are associated with the permits, to then get the township the additional revenue that is generated as a result of the taxes, as a result of that improvement being made. So there's a lot of things here and a lot of ways that everybody can benefit, from the homeowners in town that now need to seek it, that won't need to seek this relief in the future, to the township being able to have better ratables in town, and people actually seeking the actual, you know, appropriate relief through building permits and things of the like. So just, so that's on everyone's radar. I hope to have something for the council in the near future regarding the FAR here in town. Next is, and again, before the agenda, is Passaic County, as of today, announced that the Passaic County Mega Site for Vaccines is now going to be open for walk-in vaccinations starting tomorrow. This site is at, the actual technical address is 1710 Route 46. Most locals know it as the old Model Site in Woodland Park, next to where Fairway and the stores that existed there previously. The hours will be this week, Tuesday, the 27th, Thursday, the 29th, Friday, the 30th. Walk-ins are welcome from 12 to 4 p.m. The only thing that you need to know is you need to live, work, or attend school in Passaic County, and you are eligible to get a vaccine there. Anyone that has not yet gotten their vaccine or who has been attempting to schedule to get their vaccine, if you have not gotten it yet, please make your way down there if you're looking to get it and walk in between 12 to 4. Again, this week, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, between 12 to 4. So I hope anyone that needs it is able to get there. If you do have other questions regarding the vaccine site and/or any questions regarding the vaccine, you can reach out to Passaic County's COVID hotline at 973-881-2790. So please feel free to give them a call and ask any questions that you may have. Next is, there are two ordinances on the agenda, one of them having to do with the, the budget and the cost of living bank. And the other is Ordinance 1405. It is the salary ordinance that I wanted to address before we move through this, this meeting. And I'm glad that we're joined this evening by our auditor, Mr. Wilkatz, who is waving now. And I am going to turn it over to him for the technical explanation of our Ordinance 1402, which is the calendar year 2021 ordinance to exceed the municipal budget cost of living allowance and to establish a cap bank. I will say that this is an ordinance that is passed annually. And what it does, it gives us a little bit of relief in the event, God forbid, there's an emergency in town, such as we had here in 2018 with the flood. And we are, we are now required to spend more money than we may have anticipated spending in the event of an emergency. And for the more technical explanation, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Wilkatz.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Good, good to see everybody. Mayor is 100%, 100% correct. This is an ordinance that basically every municipal government in the state of New Jersey passes every year. And what it does, it preserves your cap bank on the appropriation side of the budget for the possibility of, in the future, God forbid, there were, something happens and there's extra money, more money needed within the appropriation cap piece of the budget. You'd have the ability to do that without having any issues with the cap. So it's, it's something that's done every single year. I'm sure Little Falls has adopted this ordinance every year since the law was put on the books.
Well, thank you, Mr. Wilkatz, for the, the technical explanation on that there. There's also an ordinance on this evening for introduction. That is our salary ordinance. There is a slight modification that is being made to the salary ordinance or being proposed this evening, and it has to do in particular with our dispatchers. A major undertaking that the town recently had is that we combined our police and fire dispatchers in one location. Previously, we had police being dispatched from the municipal building on Main Street, and fire had been dispatching from Patterson Ave, where our company two headquarters is located. And although when things were slow and everything was quiet, it ran smoothly. Unfortunately, in emergency services, it seems that when things hit the fan, they really hit the fan, and we kind of need all hands on deck. And I say that because there are times in fire when multiple dispatchers are needed, and there are times in police when multiple dispatchers are needed. And what this did is it accomplished several things. It accomplished the fact that when the police needed all hands on deck, we had a second individual there to assist our primary police dispatcher, who was also there primarily handling fire at the time, and vice versa. But there was also some issues that were expressed to me as this was happening, such as the dispatchers were always subject to a sort of a range in their salary. And what we wanted to do, and what we have found over the years, is that it becomes actually extremely expensive to continue to train new dispatchers who are here for limited times because we didn't have any sort of set salary guidelines for our dispatchers. So what we did is, is we are making an investment into them so that it is then returned to the township by no longer having to continue to train new individuals year after year after year. And we are setting a salary step guide for the dispatchers so that we end up with career dispatchers here in Little Falls, not people who are using Little Falls Dispatch as a stepping stone to get to the next job. So I am proposing that in our Ordinance 1405 in the salary ordinance this evening. All right, that was a lot of stuff before we actually get to my actual mayor's report, which overall will be relatively brief because the very first will be the public hearing on the 2021 municipal budget, along with our resolutions to amend the 2021 municipal budget and the resolution to adopt the 2021 municipal budget, all related to this year's annual budget.
Mayor? Thank you for that. You know, Mayor, these meetings are very formal. Are we getting feedback? Are we good? Can everyone hear me?
You're good.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor, these meetings are very formal. Do you plan on doing some virtual town hall meetings for the residents that want to ask questions? Maybe not in this form, that this is such a formality, although we try to break it down, but there are many rules regarding a council meeting. Do you have any of those plans on your schedule? And also, I see we have a very strong number in our Uniform Construction Code of $148,738. You want to talk a little bit about that, why that number is so strong?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, despite the fact that materials for construction seem to be double or triple what they were some time ago, it seems that there are still people making investments into their homes, especially here in Little Falls. And I absolutely love to see that, that people continue to take pride in their homes here and continue to make this investment in their homes. But of course, as these bigger developments begin to come online, also, there's going to be some incredible amount of fees that we will begin to collect over the next handful of months with those particular developments as well. So those are all things that are going to be factored in, will assist in, you know, maintaining a stable tax base here in Little Falls. But it, it, again, this also goes back to the reason that we want to continue to encourage people to make proper applications to the Planning Board and eliminating this FAR. All of these things kind of overlap here, and I think it makes good sense for, for us here as a township.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions or comments to the mayor?
Mayor, I just had one question for you. With the county now announcing that the walk-ins are going to take place this week, can we have Scott maybe take that information and blast it out? Because not everybody's on social media, and I know the county put it on Facebook this evening, but it might be nice just to email the residents so that they're aware.
Yep, I actually, I just received the information a little earlier. I forwarded it over to him. So I'm going to ask, you know, that, once he does check his emails, I'm sure he will get that information out to everyone. And I realize I didn't fully answer Council President's question with respect to a town hall type of format. Yeah, I, I, I agree with you. These types of meetings are formal. Everybody is, you know, very proper, and I do like a laid-back format to sort of get information out to the public. One of those where, you know, I can wear a t-shirt or a polo, and we can all just have sort of a fireside chat. And I think it would be nice, in the past, you know, Facebook was sort of the easiest way to do that and get the information out, but it sort of limited the questions and the style or the, the way that people could ask me questions. They had to be messaged during the chat, and I had to try to keep up with 1,000 incoming messages. I think that Zoom now actually provides for a very nice platform for us to get a very large digital gathering for everybody to remain safe in the comfort of their homes. And it provides for a laid-back way for us to communicate and to have a discussion regarding just anything happening in town. We, you know, I'm happy to have a couple of discussion topics, but I'm also happy to answer any questions that anyone may have about what's happening in their neck of the woods or somewhere else in town. So absolutely, I, I'd like to get a date out, maybe, maybe in May for a sort of, you know, group, roundtable discussion in town hall style meeting.
Thank you. Council have any other comments or questions to the mayor?
I, I had a quick question. Regarding the elimination of the FAR, there will still be regulations on how much the footprint of a piece of property can occupy of the total property, correct?
Absolutely, yeah. No, we are not going to eliminate an FAR and not adopt some sort of alternative to lot coverage in town. You're not going to be able to build, you know, a house with only a five-foot setback on, over the entirety of a property, you know, up in our R1A or R1B or R1C zone. So no, there will absolutely still be some variation of a lot coverage requirement, but just eliminating this FAR that essentially requires that for every single story you go up, although the footprint of your home does not get larger, it, it eliminates the possibility of you getting larger in the future because you've gotten that much more square footage vertically. And again, I think it's just a flawed system, and we have had at least one application every month over the past year roughly, or year and a half, that Council President and I have to step off of and recuse ourselves because it triggers a variance in which we are not permitted to sit and that the board actually sits as a land, I'm sorry, a zoning board rather than a planning board, although it's commonly referred to just as a planning board here in Little Falls. There are, there is a combination board. It's a land use board, and different types of variances trigger whether or not it is a zoning application or planning application. And this would allow, again, more of those things to fall under planning rather than zoning.
Great, thank you.
Satisfied with that clarification, Councilman Kwadi?
Very much so.
So we're going to move on. This time, have a motion to approve Resolution A.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Havletts, seconded, seconded by Councilmember Kwadi. Resolution A is to amend the 2020 municipal budget. Mrs. Kraus, call the roll regarding Resolution A.
Councilmember Havletts?
Yes.
Councilmember Kwadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Van Cherry?
Yes.
Council President Scobha?
Yes. Have a motion to open to the public hearing on the 2021 municipal budget.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Van Cherry, seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Seaver. All those in favor of opening to public hearing on, for the 2021 municipal budget signify by saying aye. For those opposed to that motion, signify by saying nay. Motion carries. So can we take individuals who want to voice their concerns or questions at this time?
Yes, you certainly can.
Thank you. And please let me know if there are any.
Council President? Can we have, can we have the public comment section just read here by the, by the clerk? Just so that people know how to properly raise their hand or unmute.
Mrs. Kraus, can you please inform the residents of how to obtain, so that we know they want to partake in the public hearing?
Sure. I will just read the section about how to raise your hand. So members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute. to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon.
Thank you for that clarification.
I am seeing no hands raised, Council President.
Thank you.
I have my hand.
Council President Norman, I think wants to speak.
Okay. I can't find the star nine because I have problems with my eyesight, but if I I would like to talk.
Okay, for the record, sir, please say your name and address.
Surely. First, my name is Norman Scherzer. I live at twenty six Birch Road in Little Falls. I have to tell you on a personal note that I go to dozens of Zoom meetings. This is the best dressed group I've I've had a Zoom meeting with probably in months, and I wouldn't want to tie had I had I known. So kudos to the kudos to the group.
Thank you.
First, a brief background as to why I want to speak tonight. I currently run a cancer research organization called the Liferaft Group. It's a global organization. But in my prior public health background, I worked for the Centers for Disease Control for twenty five years. I was a Communical Disease Project Officer. Following that, I was the Assistant Commissioner of Health at the City of New York. Following that, I was a consultant on AIDS for the Harvard Institute for International Development and so on. I currently meet weekly with colleagues from CDC. I do some pro bono consulting. And I want to talk to you tonight about 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 the pandemic and I'll make my remarks.
Mr. Scherzer, I have to interrupt you because we're discussing right now, this is a public comment on the budget. You'll be able to make your comments in a later part of this meeting. But this specifically right now is regarding the twenty twenty one municipal budget.
I misunderstood. I won't reintroduce myself.
That's fine. Just be patient and we'll get to you. But that's as I mentioned before, these meetings have a regiment and a policy and we adhere to them. So right now, if anyone wants to voice their concerns regarding the twenty twenty one budget, that's what the floor is hoping for at this time. Do we have anyone, Mr. Kusia or Mrs. Kraus, that want to speak concerning the twenty twenty one budget?
I see no hands raised, Council President.
Thank you. Kavva motion to close to the public hearing for the twenty twenty one municipal budget. Moved by Councilmember Havlet's, second by Councilmember Kwadi. All those in favor of closing to the public hearing for the twenty twenty one budget signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Kavva motion to adopt the twenty twenty one municipal budget.
Still moved.
Moved by Councilmember Vanchery's second.
Second.
The second by Councilmember Kwadi. Mrs. Kraus, call the roll on adopting the twenty twenty one municipal budget.
Councilmember Havlet's?
Yes.
Councilmember Kwadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Before we continue, Mrs. Kraus, please make sure the minutes are noted that Mr. Wilcox has joined our meeting and answered questions by the mayor concerning some of our ordinances. Councilor Wenzel, do you have anything to report to this governing body this evening?
Not tonight, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you. Kavva motion and to open the meeting for the public for all matters. Moved by Councilmember Vanchery's, second by Councilmember Kwadi. Is that correct, Mr. Councilman Kwadi? Do you second that motion?
Absolutely.
Thank you. All those in all those in favor of voting for public matters, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion signify by saying nay. This motion now carries. Mrs. Kraus, please read the statement.
Members of the public who desire to provide comment shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. Meeting moderator will cue the members of the public that wish to provide comment and the Council President will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Please give your name and address for the record. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you. Okay, now the floor is open.
Mr. Scherzer, I think should begin.
Mr. Scherzer, the floor is open. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. And you're still the best best group I've met with so far.
Thank you again for that compliment.
So a couple of comments about about where we are in this in this in this pandemic. We're involved right now in a race against the mutations that are taking place. And the difficulty with these mutations and they're quickly taking over the United States is that they're about fifty percent more infectious than what we started with. Fortunately, so far, the vaccines that we have seem to be effective against them. But a lot more people will catch this virus if you come in contact with it today than were the case when when this thing first started. Couple of things are happening in in Little Falls and taking a look at at the data that the mayor has provided. The number of cases are going down, but the age group is going down as well. And for example, if you took a look at just the last two weeks that we reported, the week of April ninth, under the age of nineteen, seventeen percent. The most frequent, most recent week, April twenty sixth, it doubled to thirty five percent. And this is following a national trend where you're seeing this virus now entering a younger population. Now, kids are less likely to spread the disease and less likely to become sick from it, but not unlikely. And one of the things I don't want to see is to have to report a death of a child under the age of nineteen. But that's the direction that we're going in right now. The vaccination issue is now changing dramatically. We're now in an era where there's enough vaccine. But we're about to enter a period where more and more people are reluctant to get the vaccine. We need to achieve herd immunity. We need to get about ninety percent of Little Falls immune to this virus. We can do it one of two ways. You either get vaccinated or you get the disease and run the risk of dying. We have a broken public health infrastructure in the state of New Jersey. Home rule does not work well when it comes to dealing with communicable diseases. And on top of that, if you've been following the budgets in in New Jersey, the the public health infrastructure, including the state health department, has cut their budgets year after year after year. So we have something like sixty one health departments servicing over ninety municipalities. Little Falls being served by Clifton, Patterson being served by another health department, total of being served by another health department. And if you ever had to put together an infrastructure for chaos, this is it. And you sort with the vaccine rollout, the total confusion about this list and that list and what have you. What we need to do now is we have to turn the corner and we can do it, but a couple of things have to happen. We need a better public health education program in Little Falls. We need better messaging. And if you're going to wait for it to come from the Clifton Health Department, it's dangerous. I called the Clifton Health Department. I spoke to the health educator and I asked her, can you tell me the plans you have to educate people to get the vaccine? And she couldn't because I don't know if they exist yet or maybe that she was simply simply uninformed. You guys need to set an example. I assume you're going to be vaccinated, but if you're coupled, you may as stand in front of City Hall. I don't want you to get vaccinated twice for just for for a PR shot. But if a few people need to be vaccinated or a couple of seniors or what have you, let's get some publicity and show people that it's safe. The controversy recently over the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, where in fact, there are about a dozen women who came down with with blood clots, has turned more and more people off. People are frightened. And we need to provide people with information. I love to hear the fact that you're planning to have a virtual township meeting. Can you invite, can we invite the Director of Public Health, Sidney and Clifton, to attend some of our township meetings and tell us what's going on? Not just with the data in terms of cases. Contact tracing in our area is being handled out of Clifton Health Department. The best time to do contact tracing is when the caseload gets lower. And what we want to try to find, and I've asked the Clifton Health Department this several time, and I've also asked the Director of Public Health for the Passaic County Health Department, same thing. Tell us what the patterns are. If we're getting cases, where are they coming from? Are they coming from commuters? Are they coming from Newark? Are they coming from kids going back into school? And it isn't just just for the sake of knowing about numbers. People have businesses that they want to open. People have kids that they want to send to school and they want to have some kind of data that tells us where we are going. And it would be terrific if we could occasionally invite the Clifton Health Department to tell us just what it is, what it is that they are that they are doing. And that's it. I want to thank you for letting me letting me speak. I want to thank the mayor for posting figures about vaccinations recently. I think that was helpful. But I think this is a time where we need to, we need to take a little bit more of of a step. And Vince, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Scherzer, for taking time out and coming to this meeting this evening. Does the council have any questions that they are concerns or comments they'd like to ask Mr. Scherzer at this time? Mayor, would you? Councilmember Seber, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Scherzer. I just wanted to thank you for coming on and, you know, enlightening us. I know personally, as an essential worker, being vaccinated very early on and felt very lucky to have it. And so my entire family is vaccinated. I have a seventeen year old daughter who luckily has been opened up now and will be completing her second vaccine soon. As a mom, my concern is I have a fifteen and a half year old. So, you know, just a few months shy and now having to wait because of that cutoff date in terms of safety and and the, you know, the knowledge that we have about the existing vaccines right now. So hopefully, we're going to be holding out for that. The one thing that I do always also do tell my children, regardless of where we see a spike or where we think this is coming from, safety protocol is still safety protocol. And so whether they're in school or they're stopping at seven eleven or they're going to the mall, whatever the case is, the protocol is still going to be the same regardless of where infection rate is, because I want them to think that the infection rate is coming from everywhere. And so that is going to best suit them for protecting themselves and protecting else everyone else around them. But really, thank you very much for coming on to the meeting tonight.
I'm sure the mayor will include this in his form when he does his meetings, correct, Mayor?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. I will say, you know, I'm not opposed to having the health department at a council meeting. Unfortunately, we are usually talking to the same three people aside from the council members at council meetings. So, you know, I will say at this point, the there seems to be a small crew that joins us at our council meetings. You know, I have certainly, you know, beaten the proverbial dead horse here with with this information. You know, so it is, you know, nobody on this call should be surprised by by that. As far as the data for Little Falls, I think there are some potential flaws in the information that's even being released. Little Falls's numbers look particularly low for vaccinations compared to some of the surrounding municipalities in Passaic County. But I think a large reason for that is is that the numbers that they were utilizing when they were looking at percentages of residents vaccinated is from our twenty ten census. And our twenty ten census included several thousand, maybe three thousand students from Montclair State University. And while that's great for our numbers, for state funding purposes and for other purposes, those three thousand additional quote unquote residents that we have here in Little Falls are not here. They can't get vaccinated. Their number will never come back to us. So having five thousand out of fourteen thousand is closer to a third, but having five thousand out of eleven thousand is closer to fifty percent. So, you know, there is definitely some flaw in the computations and in the data that is being released. I'm not saying that it's not accurate based upon what they're providing. But I think there are some inaccuracies inherently built into the information that we are getting for that reason. So I'm with you. I would love to see herd immunity. I hate wearing a mask, especially in the summer, especially when it's humid. I do it, but I don't enjoy it. So the first day that, you know, we are free of this and rid of this pandemic, I am absolutely looking forward to it. And you hit the nail on the head as far as public health education and health departments cutting budgets year after year after year for decades in New Jersey. We have severely understaffed health departments statewide, maybe countrywide, maybe, you know, internationally at this point. I don't think anybody at any point while there's prep for pandemics, I don't think anybody thinks, well, next week we're going to actually see and have the start of a pandemic. These are unprecedented times, you know, and yeah, they are severely understaffed. Yeah, there's budgetary restrictions as to how many people they can hire, what they can do, the amount, the speed at which they can work for those reasons. It's it's it stinks. It's frustrating. I wish there was an unlimited budget for this. I wish they had an unlimited number of personnel that were able to help address these types of issues. And, you know, I know there was some people in town upset that the numbers that were being provided to the township slowed down once vaccinations became available because the data was being provided slower because hands were on deck trying to get the vaccinations out rather than crunching numbers in Excel spreadsheets. And we're at a point now where you're right, where I would, nothing is really ideal. But I think everybody is doing the absolute best they can. And I'm really looking forward to the end of this pandemic, whenever that may be. It's not next week, but whenever that may be.
Can I clarify? I'd like to see the health officer come to the township meeting so that everybody here can question him. What are you doing? I'm not accusing him of not doing anything. I'm sure they're working very hard. But I I covered New Jersey for the public health service for the years. I understand these health departments. If the health officer comes before you, Little Falls is going to come up a little bit higher in terms of 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 their thought process. When you look at a spreadsheet that Clifton puts out periodically cases, they list cases, but when it comes to Little Falls case, it just says Little Falls case. Or everything else, they indicate that they they list the information. But I've tried on several occasion to have them tell me, tell me one thing you've learned from contact tracing. Imagine if if these cases were robberies and if the deaths were murders. And the police department told us, well, we don't have any information, but we're interviewing an awful lot of people. We'd go crazy. This is the time that the only reason, and if you hear the passion, it's it's, I'm eighty one years old. And 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 thank God I got the vaccine. Not because of my public health background. One of my granddaughters is really good at this. She just went on the phone again and again and again. But I think that we need to get a little bit more more attention and we need to shine the spotlight on the people who contract this, who we contract to for services to find out just what is they're doing and what are your plans for educating people? Put up a sign someplace, put up a table someplace, hand out a brochure someplace. I don't see anything. And if you and you guys have seen something, let me know what it is, a bulletin board or something. You know, I went down to the recreation center to the shack recently because I love their little cheeseburgers and stuff. There's a great sign and the sign says, and I took a picture, protect the Polack. Okay, let's protect the town. Put up another sign. I'm sorry for being so passionate, but I'm telling you, we can turn the corner now.
Mr. Scherzer, you don't have to apologize for being passionate. Passionate is good. It's a very, the utmost pressing problem on our society today is this COVID. So we appreciate your comments and we're listening to you.
Yes. President, I was just, I was trying to buzz in before. Yeah, I was going to say, Mr. Scherzer, you know, again, to reiterate what Councilwoman Seber said, thanks for coming here. I mean, as the mayor alluded to, unfortunately, with these types of meetings, we don't get a lot of people that follow. And if we were in person, we'd have a small amount as well. So the one thing that we could consider is the mayor discussed before about doing some town halls about some updates. Maybe it is worth doing a town hall with Mr. Beagle and his staff to make themselves available, to your point, to answer any questions or do their best if they can to try to answer it, if not, just have some follow up because, you know, we're all in this situation where we wanted to go away, but it's still lingering. And, you know, we're constantly, like the mayor said too, you know, we wear a mask and we have to keep reminding not only the kids, but adults to do that when they're out. So it's definitely something that, you know, we should consider as well if the Clifton Health Department is willing to do it. And I think they would to answer some questions that you and others in the township may have.
Thank you, sir. And when you and when you see Ellen, tell her Tony said hello, okay?
President, I just wanted to add something very quickly. Thank you as well, Mr. Scherzer, for coming out. For the record, I have already been vaccinated, so getting a vaccine publicly is not possible because it would be my third shot. So I can't do that, but I but I do appreciate the idea. But I will go on the record as saying my son is under twelve years old, will turn twelve this year. If the guidelines get If the guidelines get lowered to allow a twelve year old to get the vaccine, I will take him on his twelfth birthday to get it. I don't know how to endorse the vaccinations any more than by saying that. And so I do appreciate the notion that if your public officials are doing it, maybe it makes some more people interested in doing it. I also think that a lot of people are out there believing false information because they want to believe it. And it's an uphill fight to try and get them to believe the truth. But I can tell you that personally, I have been vaccinated and I would take my son the day he was available. So thank you for your comments.
So we're going to move on. I, at this time, I know Chairman of the Planning Board Walter Kilpatrick is joining us and I think he has a question or comment. Mr. Kilpatrick? I'm sorry, Mr. Kilpatrick, you're muted. You're muted.
You're on mute, Walter.
On mute. Mr. Kilpatrick, you're on mute. We still can't hear you, sir.
Press the button, press the button, the red, the button that has a red line, press it where it says mute, press the mute button.
If you're on a computer, it's the bottom left corner of your screen.
See the microphone? There you go.
I think I got it.
Yep, you have it. Welcome.
This is, uh, this is my first, was my second. I did a planning board meeting on the iPad at the first council meeting. So Cynthia, uh, our, our wonderful municipal clerk is going to have to include instructions for iPad users like me.
Record, sir, your name and address.
My name is Walter Kilpatrick, Six Oak Tree Lane.
Thank you.
What I wanted to say was two things. I wasn't expecting to speak tonight at all. A- as far as Mr. Scherzer, I am very impressed. We're very fortunate in town to have a man of his experience and as the council president also said, passion, I follow the same percentage as the mayor did. It was surprising that forty-three percent. But I'm very familiar with the census and I, I agree, two to three thousand of those are Montclair students, so they skew the ratio. But Mrs. Kilpatrick and I were speaking today. Everything I've heard is, is good, but to take it one step further, we might consider doing a NICSE. And even further, we might, if we, and I don't know the legalities, if we can identify those who have not had their vaccinations, this is an opportune time, simply because now we do walk-ins. We do walk-ins at Model. I went to ShopRite today to pick up a prescription for a neighbor and the sign said Pfizer shots being given out today, just walk in. So this might be an opportunity to get to a lot of our neighbors. And I would be willing to help coordinate that or see how we can get the names or phone numbers of some of our people who are not vaccinated, vaccinated. A lot of them are not computer literate. Like me, you can't sign on and raise my hand on the iPad. As far as the mayor, the mayor addressed the FAR issue is something that's bothered me for a long time. And I agree with everything he said. If anybody has questions, FAR stands for floor area ratio. That's why it can double the size of the footprint. Councilman Kwadi, we already have a building coverage ratio, which is identical of thirty percent. So that should cover most of the issues until the new ordinance goes into place. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Chairman Kilpatrick for joining us this evening and for your words. And yes, we, the mayor and I look forward to spending more time with you on the planning board when we get this floor ratio straightened out. Because it's really kind of silly that, you know, we show up and there's a few of those on the agenda. We can't participate and is this for some really minor, minor building additions. So thank you, sir. The floor is open.
Mr. Duran is next, council president.
Mr. Duran, you have the floor.
Jim Doran, twenty-two, River Circle.
Good evening.
I'm com- good evening. And thank you to, to everyone, the council members and the other speakers. These meetings are opportunities for me to learn things that are quite valuable and useful and I will, if I run into people who might have even have a chance of being interested, I'll tell them what I benefit from them. I'd like to comment as a vaccine consumer, I'm halfway there. And the one thing that I would like to share with anyone, if this, if they've watched this as a video later, the personnel at the Model site are the most gracious of people in official positions I have ever dealt with in my life. It, it's something that I associate with some of the changes that the current culture have brought about in some millennials. But there it was right straight through. And just also mention that you, I was asked to show my Medicare, Medicare card and my insurance. And I was asked to answer a questionnaire. So allow, if, if those who are going to get them soon, allow at least ten extra minutes for the process. I'm still breathing and talking after my first shot and I'll report back after my second. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duran, for your comments this evening and we hope all the best goes well with your second shot.
I'm taking it in my left arm, so I can still use mouse.
Well, I guess that's a good consider. We got a shot.
Mr. Fernandez is next, council president.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Fernandez, the floor is yours.
I'm gonna, if you don't mind, Mr. Scobah, I'm gonna let the young lady Vanessa Apaza before me, if you don't mind.
Very good. Mr. Fernandez is giving the speaker a courtesy. So Mr. Is it Apaza? Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, your name and address for the record, miss.
Vanessa Apaza, nine, inside avenue. Um, I am just kind of following up on my last conversation with the council members last, at the last meeting, I, I spoke about the licensing for, or the limiting of licensing for recreational marijuana businesses, all all different, all six different types of licenses. And I'm wondering if the council is planning or the township is planning on passing, passing any ordinances to regulate and control that, this area of marijuana business operations in Little Falls.
Thank you for joining us this evening and asking a really important, good question. The council has been in discussions with the mayor and the staff. And at this point, there'll be no retail licenses granted in the township of Little Falls. But we are looking at granting possibly warehousing and growing licenses in its township. As well as I think the license and correct me, Mayor, Mr. Bush is a courier license where transportation of canvas would be allowed as well. So we are looking at having that come before the council to vote on it to allow those businesses to operate in the township in a certain zones, in certain regulate, certain zones that are going to be established.
That's correct.
Have any other questions, Mr. Pez, concerning that?
Yes, is that, is that, will that be presented by the next meeting? I'm asking that because of the time, the time restriction that we have to pass the ordinance.
Thank you for reminding us. It is a hundred and eighty days and we do have to act. So we're hoping to have something come before the council soon. Possibly at the next meeting, but these do take time with the zoning of where we want that to be. And, you know, we don't break sunshine rules. So talking to the council members has to be done, you know, one at a time. And there is some back and forth and the understanding of what these licenses are. So hopefully at the next meeting, if not, probably definitely the meeting after that, probably the second meeting in there. You have any follow up questions regarding that?
No, not regarding that. I did just want to make a comment on the first speaker, Mr. Norman. I'm also in the public health field and I'm a certified health education specialist. So I am, I agree with the concern about the lack of advertising that there is for education. And I know I, I would think that Clifton Health Department is probably maybe under, understaffed. I know I did helped with contact tracing for the city of Passaic. And I know it was a very difficult, and they're still struggling, especially with vaccination. Trying to communicate that education to the public. So I, I'm a little bit resistant to offer any type of likes assistance, but I do work with Illustrator and Photoshop. So if if this township needs any assistance with putting some sort of education flyer or anything, I could be of assistance.
Ms. Peza, would you do us a favor and tomorrow, contact Mr. Kusia's office and give your contact information so we know how to contact you? So when that comes up, we'd be able to reach out to you if you're willing to offer assistance to this community. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fernandez, thank you for giving that courtesy to Ms. Peza. The floor is yours, sir.
No problem. I understand that ordinance fourteen oh six was pulled out of the, of the meeting tonight.
That's correct.
Can you tell us why, number one, and who pulled the ordinance out?
I, I pulled the ordinance out, sir. The council's not ready to adopt it.
Okay, I read something that previously to the ordinance being pulled out, that one of the things that he said, basically, they were asking for permission for a four story building. Is that correct?
In, in the redevelopment, is that a four story building, Mr. Kusia, that's going to be in that plan?
I believe that it is, sir.
Yes.
Is that, supposedly we don't have any in town, correct? Am I, uh?
There's, there's buildings that are, are higher. The mill is nine, nine stories high, so.
Is it? Okay. It was just, I was just wondering, first of all, why was it pulled? Who pulled it? I thought it would have been the, the developer.
No, you can, if you want to take, it's I who pulled it. It wasn't the developer. We're not comfortable yet at this time. And Councilwoman Seaver, is it nine stories the mill? I'm not, sir, I don't want to misspeak here how many stories are at the mill.
That's correct. The, the tall building is nine. Also, we do have other buildings in town, even just the green building, you know, by Montclair, you know, so there are several residences along.
All right. Let me continue. Let me ask the second question. And it has something to do with ordinance fourteen oh five, the salary ordinance.
That's it.
I went down the line looking at the salaries of, you know, quite a few, first the title and then the salary next to it. And I mean, I, I don't know too much about, you know, who, who gets or who does what and see what the titles are and whatever. But some of the, some of the titles, they seem like repetitious, like they seem like one was the code enforcement, enforcement office, the other one was the the inspector code enforcement officer. I mean, what's the between all those things? One was the technical assistant construction office, the other one was the assistant construction office administrator, administrator. One was the, the building inspector, the other one was the, the enforcement building inspector. I mean, isn't that the same?
Yeah, wouldn't it be nice, Mr. Fernandez, if government could consolidate a lot of titles and consolidate a lot of positions, but that's not the case. But Mr. Kusia, would you like to address that and talk further, why we have so many titles and?
Well, certainly in the construction office, we have very specific directed by statute individuals who require specific licenses. So if you're a construction official, you would not necessarily be an electrical subcode official. And so our situation is that our electrical subcode official is a part time employee who is not the construction official. It would be odd to find someone who had all of those licenses in one individual and could actually do all of the inspections and the planning review and the application reviews.
Because, and, and it struck me even more when at the beginning of the meeting, Mr. Vancheri said something about the Mr. Di Maria, which happens to be the building inspector. When that-
No, Mr. Di Maria is not the building inspector. He's the construction official.
All right, I'm sorry, construction official, I'm sorry. And so he went down by the river and to look at some trees. Is, is he also the tree official or trees?
No, he's- Mr. Fernandez, what I was saying is the water company property that's along Main Street, they have a number of trees that are dangling on that property. So he reached out to the water company to let them know they needed to check this out because some of those trees are about to fall. Wasn't down by the water. It's the water company's property that's on East Main Street and Hobson Avenue. And Mr. Mr. Di Maria is a- as the construction official responsible for code enforcement. So trees coming down would be under code enforcement.
Oh, he's, if a tree comes down, does his department looking at trees?
It would be code enforcement, yes, whether or not the tree belongs to the municipality or it belongs to the homeowner, all those questions come under the municipal code.
That's what was mind boggling that with so many personnel, with so many titles and whatever, there were so many so many divisions and one was looking, the construction official was looking at the tree and, and so on. That was the question. That's all.
The fine question, sir. Mr. Fernandez, floor is still open. Do you have any other questions?
No, 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 that's, I'm done.
Thank you for-
I'm gonna close my mouth.
No, you're welcome to continue to talk. We don't, I don't think we ever have asked you since I've been on this.
I'm, I'm done.
All right. So thank you for just participating and your questions. Always good to see you, sir. Is the floor still open? Are there any other residents?
There are no other hands raised, sir.
Thank you. Have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Havlet, second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Vancheri. This is a voice vote. All those who want to close the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed that motion signify by saying nay. The motion carries. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Councilmember Kwadi, second by Councilmember Havlet. Um, you know what I like to do with the consent agenda? Mrs. Kraus, can you just highlight the consent agenda? What's, what we're voting on?
Sure. So we have the monthly department reports. We have a couple of fire department applications on there for auxiliary and also a state firearms association member. We have three resolutions. One of those is an agreement to renew our membership with our, one of our co-ops for purchasing. Another is a bundle billing agreement with St. Joseph's, St. Joseph's Hospital, and the other is the bill list. We also have three ordinances on tour for public hearing and one is for an introduction.
Thank you for that explanation. Does the council have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? This is a roll call. Mrs. Kraus, call the roll on the consent agenda.
Councilmember Havlet?
Yes.
Councilmember Kwadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, at this time, can you please read ordinance one four oh two?
Second reading in public hearing of ordinance number one four zero two, an ordinance entitled calendar year twenty twenty-one, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget cost of living allowance and to establish a cap bank.
Could I have a motion to adopt, I'm sorry, could I have a motion to open to public hearing on one four oh two?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Kwadi, second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Vancheri. All those in favor of opening to public hearing on fourteen oh two signify by saying aye.
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 Close to that signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Is there anyone public that would like to speak to fourteen oh two? Have a motion to close to the public hearing on fourteen oh two. By Councilmember Havlet, second by Councilmember Kwadi. All those in favor of closing to the public hearing on fourteen oh two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. The motion carries. So at this point, we're going to adopt ordinance fourteen oh two. Can I have a motion to adopt ordinance fourteen oh two? Moved by Councilmember Kwadi, second by Councilmember Havlet. Mrs. Kraus, call the roll to adopt ordinance one four oh two.
Councilmember Havlet?
Yes.
Councilmember Kwadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yeah.
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, at this time, please read ordinance 1403.
Second reading in public hearing of ordinance number 1403 and ordinance entitled, ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls in the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, for dedication of right-of-way Hemlock Road.
Can I have a motion to open to the public hearing on ordinance 1403?
So moved.
By Councilmember Vancheri, second by Councilmember Seaver. All those in favor of opening to the, for the public hearing on 1403 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion signify by saying nay. That motion carries. We are now open on 1403. Is there anyone that would like to talk concerning 1403? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close to the public hearing on ordinance 1403?
So moved.
By Councilmember Vancheri, second by Councilmember Havlet. All those in favor of closing to the public hearing on 1403 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion signify by saying nay. That motion carries. Have a motion to adopt ordinance 1403.
So moved.
By Councilmember Vancheri, second, second by Councilmember Seaver. I know this is a little mundane here, but this is, this is the procedures that we go through. Please call the roll, Mrs. Kraus, on 1403.
Councilmember Havlet?
Yes.
Councilmember Kwadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance 1405.
Introduction of ordinance number 1405 and ordinance entitled 2021 Little Falls Salary Ordinance with a second reading in public hearing scheduled for May 24th, 2021.
Have a motion to introduce ordinance 1405. By Councilmember Kwadi, second by Councilmember Vancheri. All those in favor of introducing ordinance 1405, I'm sorry, Mrs. Kraus, you have to call the roll on that.
Councilmember Havlet?
Yes.
Councilmember Kwadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, before we adjourn this meeting, give us the, the residents a quick synopsis from when an ordinance starts and how that procedure works till it becomes law.
Okay, so an ordinance is read for introduction at a council meeting. It's advertised for a public hearing at a future council meeting. And then we do have the public hearing and if it does pass, the adoption, and we also advertise it upon adoption.
And how long would that, does that normally take?
It's usually, it's usually about a month.
Thank you. Have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
I want to thank Mr. Kusia, Mrs. Kraus, and our professionals for attending this meeting. All those in favor of adjourning this meeting signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, signify by saying nay. This, this meeting is now closed. Thank you, everyone.